I will call the meeting to order Madam Board Secretary.
Trustee Buena. Trustee Henderson.
Here.
Trustee Hernandez. Trustee Hoffman.
Here.
Trustee Ino.
Here.
Trustee Vela. Trustee Veras. Student Trustee Behan.
President.
Thank you. Now, we'll have VP Ino lead us in the flag slip.
Please stand. Right hand over your heart. Here we go. Thank you.
Thank you, VP Ino. At this time, Trustee Vela, would you please present the in memoriam for Troy Masters?
Yes, thank you so much, President Henderson. It is really with, I would like to adjourn the meeting in memory of Troy Masters. Troy was a publisher of the LGBTQ+ news outlet, The Los Angeles Blade, who died unexpectedly at age 63. Troy was a tireless advocate for the LGBT community and leaves a tremendous legacy of fighting for social justice and equality. Troy founded the Gay City News in New York City in 2002. It quickly became a cornerstone of queer news on the East Coast. He was a well-respected, award-winning journalist, publisher who championed LGBT rights. His death was mourned by celebrities, politicians, and the LGBT community. Just personally, he was not only just a champion for all of LGBT community, but for LACC D. He wrote numerous stories on all of our programs, the Bill of Rights, when we, the inception of our LGBTQ Affairs Committee back in 2018. So he will be greatly missed by all of us, by our staff as well. So thank you for that.
Sorry. At this point, we will now conduct the ceremonial oath of office for seats one, three, five, and seven. So first off, we have for seat one, trustee Andra Hoffman.
Thank you, Madam President. We will have, if you want to come forward, we're going to have Assemblymember Fong conduct the oath of office. Assemblymember Fong, if you could come up.
Andra Hoffman, for your third term to the Los Angeles Community College District Board of Trustees, and thank you for your leadership and efforts as president of this board, as president of the California Community College League of California, a champion for our students here in California, and for everything you do at Glendo College, and also for all the students of Los Angeles Community College District and throughout California. And with that, if you can raise your right hand, and please repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office on which I am about to enter. Congratulations!
Thank you so much. I was gonna say trustee Fong, former trustee Fong, Assemblymember Mike Fong. It was, I don't know if I'm supposed to say something now, but I just want to say this was like a full circle moment. We were elected at the same time to this board in 2015, and I'm deeply grateful and so honored that you were able to take some time off today. You know, the life of an assembly member, I know you're very, very busy, and I'm just touched and honored that you came back to swear me in. Thank you so much.
Now, we have the oath of office for Dave, trustee David Vela, for seat number three.
Thank you, Madam President. With us today, we also have the honor of having California Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Lada here to do the oath of office for trustee David Vela. Welcome, Commissioner.
The mic's here. Perfect. If I can have you raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, David Vela.
Solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States. You will support and defend the Constitution of the United. It's okay, we're all English language learners here. And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservations or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chancellor. One more round of applause for insurance commissioner Ricardo Lada, who is very busy. I really want to just take the time to emphasize how important it is for all of us here to be able to do the representation and be able to speak for students. Today, more than ever, we know that the country is facing issues like insecurity and housing, and our job is to ensure that we meet our students where they're at. And I know for a fact that this couldn't have happened without the support of all of you here in this room, in particular, my family. Thank you, Ma, my sister, my brother, and my nieces for being here. I also want to quickly thank the American Federation of Teachers, all of our bargaining units that supported us. It is not an easy thing to be able to run, you know, countywide and that. Thank you all so much. Thank you, Jameson Kimber. Thanks to all of you and all of the bargaining units. And again, thanks to my colleagues. Thank you so much.
And I'm going to take this point of privilege to actually announce the next oath of office for our current president of the board, Michelle Henderson. And with her, a special person who will be administering the oath of office, this is our Gardena City Council member, Mark Henderson, who's here with two of your sons. Please all come up. Just give them a round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ramon. I would like to introduce our sons, Jared Sanchez and Nico Sanchez. And at this time, we're going to take a point of privilege and give you an opportunity to say a few words to your mother at this proud moment.
Well, I'm not big on public speaking, but I guess for my mother, you know. But I'm I'm always proud of everything she does. She works hard in everything. She's the best. And I know everybody says that about their parent, but I really truly mean it. She's really dedicated to the things that she does, and I'm proud of her all the time.
Okay, well, thank you. And thank you, Nico, for saying that. So I would like to say, Michelle, as a colleague, as an employee of LACC D, as just a member of the community, I want to say that your presence has really been a beacon of light for folks in our community. Your dedication for student success, student achievement, as people pursue an education and/or workforce development that can change lives. Because in our household, we truly believe education can change a life. I'm not trying to make you cry, and I'm not trying to cry as well, but you know I'm going to cry. So, but I do want to get to the oath of office because you do take the oath of office seriously as all electives and as your colleagues do as well. So I'm going to get you out of here because I got another meeting I got to go to, but I want to make sure we take this time out. Please raise your hand. I state your name. Do solemnly swear firm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States. Defend? The Constitution of the United States. I am reading this slow. And the Constitution, so now the husband and wife thing is about to play out now, so you guys. And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, to the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and I will will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office on which I'm about to enter. Congratulations, Madam President. Who said, Michelle, your word?
I would just like to thank all of you in this room that have been in support of me, of my time as president and during my first term as a trustee on this board. I knew what I was getting into when I ran for this seat. So there have been no surprises, just acknowledgements. And I have had a wonderful time as board president, and I have had a wonderful time serving this board and my community as a trustee. And I have enjoyed thoroughly getting to know each of you in this room that I've had opportunities to work with, speak with, visit with, and it has been my pleasure and my honor to serve on this board. And I want to thank my husband. And I want to thank our kids for coming out today to support. You know, there are not many of us that have children, teenagers, and that like them. And I feel honored and blessed that my kids actually like me and enjoy spending time with me. So thank you all for being here for us. This was, if you've ever run for office, this was a lot. And, but we did it together. And I think it's given us an opportunity to get to know one another better and just be better public servants. So I thank you all so very much. And now for the swearing in for seat number seven, my first vice president, Dr. Kelsey Ino.
Thank you so much, Madam President. It is an honor for us to have today Superior Court Judge Akemi Arakaki. She will be administering the oath of office for Vice President Kelsey Ino. Welcome.
Thank you. I got it. You have to raise your hand. You ready? First off, thank you all for having us. Ready? You're gonna raise your right hand. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon, discharge the duties of the office on which I am about to enter. Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge Arakaki. It was a huge honor. I asked her to do this for me today, and she said, full-heartedly, yes, and absolutely. So I'm very honored. I stood before you a couple of years ago because I had to run then. And so the past two years have been really, really instrumental growth and learning opportunities for myself. And I really look forward to working with all of you as we move into these big transitions. And I'm excited and ready to do the work. And so thank you so much. My parents and my cousins and my friends and my family are all here today to support me in this. And like everyone said here, it's a group effort, and I'm just very grateful for this time and ready to do the work. So thank you.
Now, interim chancellor Ramon, will you please read into record the ceremonial awards and certificates? Or actually, I have, I think we have a couple of electives who have certificates of recognition. What I'd like to do is get four of our trustees to come up for a photo. We'll ask the electives to come up and also present you the certificate. So we'll do it all at once. So trustee Ino, trustee Hoffman, trustee Vela, and trustee Henderson, would you please come up? If you have certificates of recognition, please come up now, and we'll present them all at once. Thank you so much. Yeah, we're in the mic.
Thank you, Madam President and board members. It's great to be here to share in this special day for our newly-elected board members. It's an honor to be here as LA's only California constitutional officer. I was reminded, representing the entire state of California. And I have to say, I want to thank you for being truly representative of our county. As someone who travels up and down the state, I can tell you that is not always the case. And to see a board that truly reflects our amazing diversity is one that should be recognized. And I want to thank you for being inclusive. I want to also, many of you may not know that the former chancellor and I are actually neighbors. We live in the same building. And every time we were doing laundry, I would tell him, Chancellor, where's my student housing? And I took these moments to advocate because now, more than ever, as you all know, we are about to enter into really uncertain times. And our community colleges are the point of contact for so many of us, so many of our most vulnerable students. And as the first openly gay California constitutional officer, I can tell you that our universities and our colleges are the safe haven for so many of us that may not be able to have that at home for our undocumented students, for our students of color, for African-American students. This is now when our leadership is going to be tested to make sure that we provide these safe places for our communities and also an opportunity to be bold, to be courageous, that we start to rethink what the community colleges are in California and throughout the country. Why not provide housing for our most vulnerable students? Why not start challenging other institutions with offering bachelorette degrees, bachelor degrees, and bachelorette degrees? So that we continue to push the envelope. We know that the master plan for higher education has left so many of us out. And so it's time to tear that document up and start a new story. One where we not only are inclusive for everyone, but that we rethink the role of our community colleges as community centers, as safe havens, as areas and communities for innovation as we thrive throughout the beautiful county of Los Angeles. And so I just want to, again, just give a shout out to everybody, in particular, my dear friend, trustee David Vela, who him and I have been on the trenches for so many years as we began talking about representation for our LGBTQ community. We started Honor PAC to make sure that we elected LGBTQ people and allies to make sure that we know that if we have at least one LGBTQ person on the board, it changes the discussion, it changes the dynamic, and it brings us closer to inclusivity. And so I just want to congratulate you, trustee Vela, for everything you've done for not only our LGBTQ students here at the district, but throughout the state. You are really a beacon of leadership and hope for so many that may not have that. And so I want to congratulate all the trustees. Steadfast work. Know that we will be watching and supporting every step of the way. And congratulations on this tremendous endeavor. Felicidades.
Good afternoon. It's an honor and privilege to join all of you here today for the LACC D Board of Trustees meeting. And just seeing all the faces up here and the work and efforts that we did together over the last decade, tremendous work. And trustee Hoffman said it, like, when we were sworn in on July of 2015 at LA City College, it's a full-circle moment with all of you and everyone in leadership in this room here. They're really promoting and advocating for the students of California, the students of Los Angeles, the students of Southern California, and the impact you're making on the hundreds of thousands of lives in our community colleges, as our insurance commissioners mentioned. Community colleges are the workhorse and backbone of higher education here in California. I'm very honored to serve as Chair of the Assembly Committee on Higher Education. And the partnership and work with LACC D has been tremendous with this board, with this organization. We've partnered on Assembly Bill 1096 to allow courses to be taught in native languages. We've also partnered on Assembly Bill 2931 to allow LACC D higher part-time tutors. And that's just the beginning. The work and efforts that we're going to continue to elaborate, collaborate on to continue to expand access, expand access to higher education in California, but also to protect our most vulnerable students going forward as well. This board has done tremendous work on that over the last decade, but even more so coming forward, there's a lot more work to be done to protect our undocumented students, protect our LGBTQ communities, to protect our immigrant communities, to protect our students here at Los Angeles Community College District. And the work and efforts of all of you is so, so critical. And I see many of you around the community at different events around town. And I'm so grateful and thankful for your service, for your leadership to this board. And in particular, thank you so much, again, to trustee Hoffman, for the honor of joining here today for your swearing in here at the LA Community College District Board of Trustees. And thank you for your service and leadership at CCLC and across California. You've been a champion of student equity and family resource centers of so many students of California. I'm so grateful for your service and leadership. And to all the trustees that have been reelected and reelected and serving on this board as well, thank you for your service, for your leadership. We look forward to all of your service here for the Los Angeles Community College District. And you know, on a personal note, my parents, I went to be here today, my parents had a met at LA City College. Many have heard that story. And it's in the summer of 66 that they met at Los Angeles City College. So I'm so grateful and thankful to all of you for your service, for your leadership, and want to wish all of you a wonderful holiday season. Thank you so much.
Wow, and really such an exciting, exciting day and time to be here today. I had to take the time to come all the way from Culver City down to downtown LA just to say hi to you all and to wish you all well. These are actually the first certificates that I've been able to give out as the new board president for Culver City Community Board of Trustees. And so there isn't a group that I'm more proud to give certificates of recognition to than to the people here who have done such an amazing job serving our community and are continuing to doing that. I see here my friend from West LA College. I really wanted to be here because we've been able to do a lot of work in Culver City with you all with regards to dual enrollment work in West LA College specifically. And it's because of the board and it's because of the amazing staff that we've been able to actually send students to college with college credits already. And so we thank the board and staff for doing all of that work. And just lastly, I want to thank the people who were sworn in today for continuing to serve and continuing to do what we know is going to be emotionally draining work. We know that with this new incoming administration, to be in education is going to be very emotionally draining. And so I want to thank you all for continuing to make sure that we are collectively providing the social safety net to our most vulnerable students, the social safety net that is education, the social safety net that is community colleges. And so I want to thank you all for your service, and I thank you all and your families for having your back and allowing for you all to serve in such strong ways. And I'm proud of you, rooting for you in Culver City. Thank you.
Thank you. So now, we are going to take a brief intermission for a reception. So please join us out in the foyer area. Food is not allowed in here. Food is not allowed in here. Food is not allowed in here.
See, I don't think your mic is.
I don't think it's on. Um, here it goes. Thank you, everyone. Now, back to the business of business. We're on item D on the agenda. The First Amendment and Brown Act guarantee a member of the public the right to criticize a public employee or public official in the performance of their duties. However, speakers are encouraged to focus their comments on issues relevant to the conduct of the public's business rather than on private or unrelated matters. Speakers are reminded that the Brown Act and First Amendment do not protect the famatory statements made which may subject the speaker to personal liability. Is there any change to the speaker list?
No, ma'am.
Madam Secretary?
No speakers.
Thank you. So now for the fun part of the day. We will now proceed to the election of officers. I declare nominations open for the position of President of the Board. A second is not required under Robert's Rule of Order. Are there any trustees that would like to make a nomination? Well, I would like to make a nomination. I would like to nominate Vice President Kelsey Eno for President. Are there any other nominations? Okay, so I will declare the nominations for President closed.
Um, we need a second for it. No.
Madam Board Secretary, roll call please. Oh, I'm sorry. Vice President Eno, do you accept the nomination of President of the Board?
I, I do. Thank you.
Alrighty then. Madam Board Secretary, roll call please.
Student trustee Beham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes. So at this point, I gladly, happily, enthusiastically pass the gavel to your new Board President, Dr. Kelsey Eno.
Do you want to say a few things? Sorry, all my stuff.
I would. I would like to once again say that I have thoroughly enjoyed my time serving as Board President this year. I thank my colleagues, those that were supportive, and all of you, working with you and making some great things happen in this district. Moving forth our vision and mission. And I am very excited to be of whatever support I can for President Eno. Thank you.
Thank you. I also prepared a few little things that I wanted to say. I first wanted to say thank you for my board, to my board colleagues for your confidence in me as we move into this next year. I do not take this role lightly and I'm incredibly honored to serve. As the granddaughter of grandparents who were unconstitutionally incarcerated during World War II, I understand how policy and injustice are linked. The results of the November election make it imperative for this board to take measures to protect and defend our students, staff, and LACC community from violence, discrimination, and a threat of defunding public schools. Community college is something I wholeheartedly believe in. The work that we get to do as trustees is so good. I dedicate, I will dedicate my energy to protect and maintain access to our community colleges. As Board President, my goals and intentions for the next year are to unapologetically advocate for equity and inclusivity, to support the disenfranchised, and to provide opportunities for upward mobility that will end generational poverty for students that we serve. To recognize that LACC not only advocates for the district, but the entire community college system, and we will continue to lead with these efforts. I also want to provide stability and unwavering support for the district as we transition through our leadership changes. Our goal will be to hire permanent visionary team to lead the LACC, our, the largest community college in the country. I also want to take this opportunity to define roles, our goals, and responsibilities for the board and the district, and to review and clarify what should be college versus district operated. And my two long-term significant goals are to work towards ANAPIZI grants, not only compete, not to have to compete with HSI or other grants, and finally, and most importantly, our Prop 13 and Prop 98 reform to ensure public schools that are properly funded. I want to give a huge thank you to my parents, my family, and my friends who are here today as well as on Zoom. I want to thank my board colleagues again for all of your support in my time here. And just in general, I want to thank all that have encouraged me, that believe in me, have seen me, love me, and challenged me through this stage in my life. I'm excited to take on this role as I learn and grow, to show up unapologetically, to do the hard things. And I just want to say thank you to everyone. Thanks. So now. Um, okay, so now I will, now. So now, as new president, I would like to declare nominations open for the position of First Vice President of the Board. A second is also not required under the Robert's Rule of Order. So now if we can accept nominations, and I do, would like to nominate trustee Hernandez to serve as First VP. Are there any other nominations? If not, I will, oh, will you accept that?
Yes.
Yes, great. So now we will close the position, and if we could do a roll call vote.
Student trustee Beham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, congratulations. Trustee Hernandez's words will be in action as she has shown us already. So now we will move on to entertaining a motion regarding the Second Vice President. I will now entertain a motion to open nominations for the position of Second Vice President of the Board. This motion also, it does actually require a second. I'd like to nominate trustee Andrew Hoffman.
So, I, just a point of clarification. It's a two-port, two-point process. I apologize, Chancellor.
Go ahead. No, there's a two-part process. Go ahead.
There is the first part that you have to have a motion that you will have a Second Vice President. That would be the first vote. The second vote then will be the vote for the actual person. My apologies for interrupting. I apologize for interrupting the Chancellor.
Gotcha. So based off of that, can I get a motion to have the role of Second Vice President be something that we will have this year? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
A little sec. Okay, great. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Beham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Great. And with that unanimous vote, can I take nominations?
Same nomination. Great.
So the nomination is to have trustee Hoffman. So we don't need a second for that, no?
No.
No. You accept the nomination?
I accept.
Great. Any other nominations? Lupe, roll call please.
Student trustee Beham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Great. So now we have our new 2025. We want to take a picture, group picture. We'll take a group picture as we now re, remove around.
Okay.
So now we're under item F. Thank you, everyone, for indulging in my family picture. I'm an only child, so, of four parents, so. That was, that was great. Um. So the land, the Los Angeles Community College District recognizes that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and cared for by the Tongva, Tavaiam, Surrano kids and Chumash people. We honor and pay respect to their elders and descendants, past president and emerging. As they continue their stewardship of these lands and waters, we acknowledge that the settler colonization resulted in land seizure, disease, subjugation, slavery, relocation, broken promises, genocide, and the multigenerational trauma. This acknowledgement demonstrates our responsibility and commitment to truth, healing, and reconciliation, and to evaluating the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of LA County, Los Angeles County. We are grateful to have the opportunity to live, work, and teach and educate on these ancestral lands, and we are dedicated to growing and sustaining relationships with native people and local tribe governments. Okay, um, now, before we proceed, and our Chancellor, are there any changes to the agenda or order of business?
Yes, thank you, President Eno. We have three changes today. We are requesting to pull Agenda Item Category K, for which there is no content. We also would like to pull Facilities Item AA6 and CC7.
Sure. May I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda and order of business with the requested amendments? So, Hernandez?
Oh, second.
Second. Trustee Hoffman? Can we do a roll call, please?
Student trustee Beham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Great. May I have a motion in a second to approve the regular board meeting and closed session minutes from November 20, November 6, 2024, and the special meeting and closed session amended minutes from August 28, 2024? So moved. Move by hand. Hernandez, second?
Second.
Hoffman, roll call vote, please.
Student trustee Beham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras? Thank you.
Great. So now, representatives from the resource table. Does anyone from our resource table want to make any comments today?
They always make me go first, so. So, good afternoon. First, I want to say we just witnessed the power of education as all of you are highly educated, highly qualified people who have been fulfilling these positions. And we see the education around the room. I'm appreciative of the education I got at Los Angeles Valley College, which allowed me to go on to Cal State LA and then USC. And today I just want to speak about gratitude. That's really what I want to talk about today. It's just gratitude. I want to thank, you know, our outgoing President, Nichelle Henderson, for your leadership this past year. Did an amazing job. I know it's hard work and it's thankless work, and we appreciate you. And, and now, President Eno, we do appreciate the work that you're about to embark on and, and the work that you've already done, as well as all the other board members in the room. I also want to thank Chancellor Ramon and Vice Chancellor Williams for recently settling an adjunct compensation MOU. This has been something we've been working on for a long period of time, and we appreciate your work on it and completing it and moving forward with it. I also want to be grateful for the amazingly meaningful job that I get to do. And I'm not talking about just as union president, which is really important. I mean, the importance of unions is the importance of fighting for workers' rights. But also being a professor and teaching in the classroom. You know, you know, I get a chance to actually impact lives, and it's really important. And many of our faculty feel the same way I do. We spend countless hours working with our students to ensure that they get the education they deserve, but we also mentor them way beyond the years that they're in our classes, and many of you who've taught have experienced that. I also want to thank, you know, our, our amazing staff who have also supported us. It's not just faculty who do this job, but the variety of different staff doing, from custodial work to, to, you know, our clerical staff, to the variety of different staff that do our, do the jobs around it. We don't always think about when we're thinking about the teachers and the professors and their direct, you know, relationship to the students. do the jobs around it. We don't always think about when we're thinking about the teachers and the professors and their direct, you know, relationship to the students. I also want to thank a board that is not afraid to advocate for change and respects its employees, and you've shown that, and you've really worked hard for our students. Right? And I want to thank, you know, all our chapter presidents, uh, you know, as well for our union, but also your presidents of your campus too. I think we aren't often as generous with each other as we should be in our intents when we have disagreements. But I do believe that most of our disagreements can be solved if we just understood that the other, the person on the other side is genuine in their belief. We should listen, and then we should talk to them and, and come to a common understanding. That's the best way to move forward on things. We're going to have disagreements in the future, but we are going to need to come together for our students in our community, particularly at a time like this. Um, I'm appreciative to have, you know, Chancellor Ramon and, and, uh, President Ino and the rest of you in the positions that you're in currently right now, knowing that we have a new administration that's going to come in and attack funding and attack higher education and the ability to teach our courses the way we need to teach our courses or even offer our courses. And having you in those positions makes me feel a little more confident that we're going to work hard to protect our students and our faculty rights. And I just want to finish with this. I'm a sociologist. Max Weber is the person who talks about bureaucracies, and he talks about the biggest problem with bureaucracies. It's not that they're inefficient. They're actually efficient for running large organizations when you really think about it. The inefficiency comes when people forget what they're there for. And he says that happens with large bureaucracies. Is that large bureaucracies forget what their core mission ends up being? I experienced that honestly when I worked for the LA County Probation Department, where you would think the goal of every probation officer was, as I used to tell my kids when they got out of juvenile hall, lay me off. You know, stop coming here, and if you stop coming here, they're not going to need to have me here any longer. And they would say, well, then you wouldn't have a job. And my response would be, yeah, but if I can't get another job, I probably don't deserve this one. Because I never meant to make money off the misery of others. But I am really appreciative and working in a space where I really do believe we remember our students when we're doing these things. Sometimes we might forget for a second. But I really do believe we care about our students in the LACC D. Whether it's administration, whether it's the staff, or whether it's the faculty, we remember what we're here for. We live in these communities that we support and we help. And I just want to thank everybody in this room and everybody listening and my fellow faculty and staff for all the work that we've done to change lives. Makes me feel really good. Thank you.
Jeffrey Hernandez, First Vice President, District Academic Senate. Angela Chavetti is, is a wish. If she has internet access, she might, uh, pop in. So I'm just going to go right ahead and deliver comments on behalf of District Academic Senate. First off, greetings to President, uh, Ino and fellow trustees and Chancellor Ramon. I would like to share with you a resolution adopted by acclamation by the District Academic Senate last week. A resolution titled Affirming Faculty Support for LACC D Students and Employees. Whereas the twenty twenty four electoral season included divisive rhetoric targeted at immigrants, particularly undocumented, women, transgender, non-binary, and other members of LGBTQ plus communities, persons with disabilities, individuals from diverse religious backgrounds and communities of color. And whereas in light of the results of the twenty twenty four election, Los Angeles Community College District students, employees, and faculty have expressed in both public and private confusion, anxiety, fear, and concern for their physical safety and well-being, and concerns about their individual rights, all of which may negatively impact the achievement of the student and district goals. And whereas the mission statement indicates that LACC D provides, quote, equitable and supportive learning environments and commitment to the community to improve the social offer of the region. Um, we, uh, District Academic Senate encouraged faculty members to show compassion and support for students who may be experiencing anxiety, uncertainty, and fear in the current political climate through the learning environment. Consultations during office hours through our discretion over incompletes and other elements of student records, uh, referrals to student support services, including Dream Resource Center and other services. And we endorse the interim chancellor's declaration that we are a community that stands together in unity, compassion, and strength. And we co- and we collaborate with college and district leadership, college senates, student services, to operationalize these commitments outlined in this resolution and to disseminate, uh, this message across all platforms and forums. But I wanted to share that with you to let you know that we are wholeheartedly, um, in, in support of working together in, in unity, uh, to support our students and employees who, um, are really in need of the, the safe place that, um, our district represents in our colleges and in ESC, um, a, 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 a place dedicated to advancing the goals of our students. And we look forward to continued collaboration in legislative advocacy, right, in twenty twenty four together. And with the leadership of Assembly Member Mike Fong with AB twenty nine thirty one, we now have a change in the education code that allows our part-time students to be treated like full-time students when it comes to being eligible to be hired as student tutors. In twenty twenty five, we look forward to continuing to work together on legislative change, this time on revisit, revisiting uh, changes that were made to the ed code, um, uh, under AB seventeen oh five. We currently have in place an education code and mechanism for prohibiting courses that relies upon one metric to the exclusion of other data, the expectation of transfer partners, or student requests, or pre-transfer level courses. The effect has been to ban intermediate algebra and other courses. Similarly, uh, AB seventeen oh five applies that same metric one-year throughput to math courses that lead to calculus one for students on the STEM pathway. In light of the possibility that, uh, courses that STEM majors, um, you know, uh, depend upon like pre-calculus, trigonometry, uh, the, the possibility that those would be banned, uh, the statewide academic senate with three resolutions added its voice to the many that were calling for changes in the implementation of that part of AB seventeen oh five. Um, changes in implementation by the California Community Colleges Chancellor's Office. And last week, the Chancellor's Office did update its guidance to allow access to trigonometry and pre-calculus courses, um, those, again, transfer level courses that lead to calculus one. Um, to allow that, uh, for two more years, two more years. It's still, um, you know, the case that those courses will be evaluated and the only metric in town still is throughput metric. But, uh, that in itself is a, it's really, uh, well received, uh, by faculty and, and the student voices that were a part of, of requesting that. We, we, we really do hope that with new legislation, we'll make improvements to that code to support the success of all students pursuing a STEM pathway, and all students who would benefit from pre-transferable English and math courses. Finally, I, I want to draw your attention to, um, the Student Equity Plan three point O. Right? So yesterday, the state chancellor's office issued a memorandum of guidance on expectations for the Student Equity Plan that will run from two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty eight. And, uh, you know, that's a, the student equity plan is, is a requirement, um, that colleges, um, uh, must submit in order to continue to receive student equity achievement funding. And the colleges must submit their plans by, uh, November thirtieth of this year. So that's plenty of time. And, and why, why that time? Because it's really the intention that there be broad input at, at those, in the colleges in development of these plans. And in, in addition to incorporating Vision Twenty Thirty, the template includes, uh, that a college will have goals for eliminating disproportionate impact and closing equity gaps. These are, uh, goals that will may seem insurmountable. Uh, we've had them before, and we know that, that the pressure is on, uh, if we're going to continue to receive student equity achievement funding, uh, and, and particularly in the current political climate. So, um, yeah, I, I, I want, I want to make sure that, that you all know, um, these expectations on colleges. There's other, uh, uh, expectations as well that are worth noting. Emphasis on transfer, in particular, why a majority of students who intend to transfer don't? Right? So that's one of the things that colleges will be asked to look into and to have answers for in their student equity plans. And their plans need to have, have a holistic approach to the target populations that are identified in the plan. Uh, approaches that pull in instruction and student services. Uh, so some of that work has already begun because of guided pathways, and so it would be a continuation and hopefully an expansion, uh, for others. Renewed emphasis on the requirement of a comprehensive student equity, uh, student educational plan, right? So a student educational plan i- is, uh, initially, um, provided in a brief form for, uh, students when they, when they, uh, come to our system, but then after so many years, then the comprehensive student education plan is, is really that, that, that guide towards completion. And, um, and so there, there is a sense that more needs to be done to make sure that those are vehicles that help students complete, particularly of those students who are disproportionately impacted. And so, um, I see this as exciting work. Uh, you know, I know that, uh, there's a lot of, uh, uh, good work that gets done and, and you all at, at the policy level or, you know, overseeing, uh, seeing that work, and so I wanted to just share those details with you on behalf of the District Academic Senate. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, sorry, Chris, um, and Angela Etcheverry is also online with her hand raised, I think, to add a little bit to the District Wide Academic Senate. Lupe is okay for? Ita.
Yes, uh, good afternoon and thank you. Um, I'm joining you from Cali Columbia today. Uh, so I wish I could be there in person, but first of all, I want to congratulate the new board president, Casagino, First Vice President Hernandez, and Second Vice President Hoffman. And I also want to thank former president, um, Michelle Henderson for her leadership and service over the past year. Very quickly, I just wanted to make a, an announcement, uh, that, uh, yesterday Governor Newsom, uh, reappointed LACC D faculty member Adrian Brown to the Board of Governors. Uh, and she will be serving her second term. Uh, so I want to congratulate Adrian. Adrian is a counselor, a counseling faculty member at Harvard College. She's been there since twenty thirteen. And she's also worked, um, uh, in the UC system and the CSU system. Uh, and she's also a member of the District Academic Senate, as well as a, um, uh, the professional development coordinator, uh, college coordinator for the District Academic Senate. So I just wanted to let everyone know, very exciting. Uh, also, we're very happy about the tutoring bill, and, uh, I just want to say that we know that we face a lot of challenges. Moments, um, in the budget, and I really think that fixing, uh, AB seventeen oh five in particular is going to be key to addressing some of our enrollment and student success challenges. So we are very committed to trying to address some of the, uh, issues we see with that legislation, as well as, um, other bills that have passed recently, as such as Common Course Membrane and Transfer Report. So thank you very much. And again, congratulations to all of you. Happy holidays and happy new year.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees and Chancellor. My name is Kristina Ozan, representing SE, SE Local ninety nine. Um, I first want to say congratulations to all the newly elected board members. I want to say congratulations to trustee Ino Henderson, Hoff, Henderson. I'm sorry, trustee Ino Hernandez Hoffman on your new role as board president and vice president. We look forward to working with you. And I want to thank you, trust, trustee Henderson and trustee Ino for your leadership and support as board president and vice president, and we ask for your continued support while serving on this board. I want to express my sincere condolences and prayers to the victims and families that lost loved ones during the tragic and senseless, uh, school mass shooting in Madison, Wisconsin this week. And to the victims that were shot but survived, my prayers and thoughts go out to them as well, and I pray for a speedy recovery. Although the cause of the incident has been substantiated, it has been alluded that the shooter may have been, um, bullied and suffered mental issues. I would like to remind everyone that on October sixteenth, twenty twenty four, Santa Monica College faced a similar tragic situation when a custodial supervisor was shot by a fellow employee who also took his own life, uh, following the incident. These tragic incidents are relevant, uh, re- relevant to LACC D because, um, the district has chosen to, chosen to, um, I'm sorry, cho- chosen to cut funding for a vital resource that has effectively helped to de- escalate and resolve conflict in the workplace. The Employee Assistant Program Intervention and Conflict Resolution Service has been um, essential to our district for numerous years, helping to ensure that district work environments can be free from hostility. Eliminating the funding for EAP intervention, conflict resolution, uh, resources is a significant era as SE Local ninety nine members and departments across the district continuously, uh, face related, um, issues, uh, when it comes to bullying, harassment, and toxic work environment. Finally, it's important to note that SE Local ninety nine successfully, successfully negotiated for EAP conflict resolution services to be provided by the district, uh, management force member, and those, and these services must be reinstated with full district funding. Um, thank you, and I just want to say happy holidays and happy new years to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's all from. Yes. Um, so thank you from the resource table. If we can, um, kind of move back, I, I think we definitely need to take the time and opportunity to, um, thank trustee Henderson for her past year as our board chair. Um, I, I wanted to open the floor to my board colleagues. If anyone wanted to say anything, I can start with trustee Buena. Or student trustee Beham, if you need a minute, or. Please. Thank you for your service.
So I wanted to, to thank, uh, trustee Henderson just for being, um, an effective president, uh, for, um, assisting us in transitioning. Um, and, and just being an overall awesome leader. I think it's, it's, uh, we have, uh, trustee, uh, Mike Fong, who was, I'm sorry. Assemblyman Mike Fong, who was here, who was a great president, and, uh, along with, um, trustee, uh, Vela, I think, trustee Henderson. Uh, you were a great president, and thank you very much for your service.
Trustee Hernandez.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Henderson, for your service. I know it's not an easy task to run these meetings, and it's definitely a, a commitment, and thank you for the time that you spent this year doing that.
Trustee Veras. Sorry.
Being the president is always the toughest task of the board sometimes because it's a matter of trying to, um, synthesize all the different perspectives and opinions that come forward. Um, uh, some are better at it than others, but it is a task that, um, uh, we ask, um, each of us to take on during time. And so to those that are able to get through the year, I, I, I take it by you were very anxious to transition in this, uh, trustee Henderson, um, at the start of the meeting, but, um, but thank you for your service and I look forward to, uh, a new year and and, uh, a new way we synthesize and communicate with each other and communicate to, uh, the public of, of what's important to this board and and what's important for this district to, um, play a role in, in our local and, and regional and national politics.
Trustee Vela.
Yeah, I want to thank you so much, President Henderson. It was really, you know, I've served before, trust, uh, trustee Henderson, uh, became president, and it was a very smooth transition. And I think that really allowed for us to kind of continue to move forward, especially on basic needs. Uh, you know, there was a lot of momentum at the colleges and at the district, and you kind of took that, kept going. Um, we were at, you know, the heels of having to negotiate with the, our bargaining units, and that also went really well. I think even more important for us, uh, we were able to successfully, you know, work to ensure that we had a smooth transition between our former chancellor and our interim chancellor now. Um, you know, it, it really is a testament to your leadership because it's not easy. I haven't done it the year before. Um, it is a very stressful situation at times. Um, and I think you handled it, uh, perfectly. I really do. And, um, you know, congratulations and thank you. Thank you so much for serving. By the way, I, now I can really say I'm no longer in the sphere of, of being, uh, the former president. So it feels good to now be like, actually, the former president was, uh, President Henderson, uh, emeritus. So good luck to you as you continue to serve for our students. And thank you for also being such a great, uh, uh, you know, trustee for, for me personally. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, you now join a group of esteemed former presidents. I think more of us were, are former presidents now on this board. So I just say, enjoy the year. It's, it, it feels a little bit like a letdown, and you kind of still identify as being the board president, but in a little while, you'll be like, oh, thank goodness, that's not my problem today. So just enjoy the year and, um, yeah, and we're going to move forward.
Uh, I would like to say, thank you for making it look cool. Um, that was one of my requests as we, as she became, as trustee Henderson became. That was one of my requests as we, as she became, as Trustee Henderson became Chair and I was VP, I was like, please just make the process look enjoyable. And we were able to get dinner a couple nights or a couple weeks ago, and just to know that you really enjoyed your time and the goals that you had set out to do, you were able to accomplish, and anything outstanding, you know, I will continue on, you know, those efforts to make sure there is continuity. And I just, I appreciate you being that buffer between, I guess, myself and a lot of the things and the moving parts. And as others have said during this transitional time, you know, where there's going to be huge changes. I mean, we all are different, you know, in the last four years, there's a lot of change, and so to adapt, meanwhile, having to adjust to the budget changes and administrative changes, I think it's a lot to take on. And so just thank you for your grace and your patience with all of us, and I will do my best moving forward, but thank you. Would you like to say something also? Yeah, okay. Thank you. I will definitely be calling on you for, or actually all the past, I guess, majority of past presidents for input as well, but thank you. Okay, so moving forward, we will now do the reports from the board. So, Trustee Vela, can you please summarize the proceedings of the FEMPAC meeting that we had on November 20?
Yes, we did a lot. No, we really did. We focused on, you know, further, I believe, exploring and really looking at policy when it comes to how we would like to move forward with student housing, you know, specifics with Dr. Sata and the consultant when it came to our, you know, P3 program, and I think that was very successful, as well as our active construction projects that we currently have. So it was, it was a very robust, as trustee, as some remember, Mike Fong used to say, committee meeting, and it was actually my last meeting. So, to be really honest with you, I want to thank, actually, if you all don't mind, I really want to thank Dr. Sata, another person who took, you know, kind of the transition from our former CFE and worked really hard. There was no real, you know, gap that I saw at all. Really want to thank the book program, really want to thank, you know, our staff, because, you know, again, Dr. Sata and Peggy, and such, because before Dr. Sata took over, it was Peggy Deco Child who took over. So, I mean, it was, you know, one, two, three, but the committee kept going, and we put the elevators on there, everyone. We'll continue with the elevators, whoever's next FEMPAC chair, so, yeah, it went really good.
Yes, thank you. Next, Trustee Hoffman, please summarize the proceedings of the Budget Committee that met on December 11.
Thank you, Chair Eno. The committee was presented with the 2023-2024 Annual Financial Audit and the State Compliance and Single Audit Report. Ms. Stillwell of Vasquez and Company gave a presentation on the state compliance and single audit, and Mr. Ray of KPMG gave a presentation on the annual financial audit results. Both the single audit and the financial audit received an unmodified opinion. The committee recommended approval of the audits, and they're both on today's agenda for board approval. The 2023-2024 Annual General Obligation Bond Audit will be presented to the Budget and Finance Committee at a later date, and the committee also received a quarterly internal audit update, along with the audit plan for 2024 and 2025. Finally, the committee received the five-year forecast and the 2024-2025 First Quarter Financial Status and Budget Report, the 311Q. And I do want to just acknowledge and thank Dr. Peter Hughes. We have a new internal audit person, if you just want to stand up and wave, thank you so much. I think we all kind of were missing Arnold Blanchard. I just have to just acknowledge his work over the years. I've been on the Budget Committee for a long time, and, you know, I think he will be missed, but I just really, and he is missed by me deeply, but I want to thank you for your work. That was an excellent presentation, and welcome to the district, and we really appreciate you being here. And that is my report.
Thank you. Trustee Beham, please summarize the proceedings of the Student Affairs Committee that you chaired on December 13.
Yes, hello, good afternoon, everybody. I chaired the SAC meeting, and we were able to discuss a lot of the different legislative initiatives, including AB 469, AB 2458, AB 705, AB 1705, and the universal dual enrollment. And then also, I was able to, aside from being the student trustee for the district, I also am a Spark representative for student parents. Oftentimes, I was speaking about, we normally speak about the LGBTQ community, as well as the undocumented, but we leave out a very voiceless community, which is the student parents, and that is a large demographic of our student population. So, I have the opportunity to go to the Basic Needs Summit out in Lemoore, California, and meet with the Compton College President to discuss the housing initiative that they were able to do and also complete within seven years at Compton College. So I look forward to seeing our process of student housing and parent housing, student parent housing being completed here at the district. So, yeah, and then also additionally, I was able to meet with Ed Truss West to discuss some initiatives that we're doing specifically for AB 2881, and that's to be able to identify student parents, because student parents are supposed to be getting priority registration as now. I don't know if there's something already in the works to be able to identify student parents. Thank you.
Very, very meaty. Trustee Hernandez, please summarize the proceedings from the Student Basic Needs AdHoc that you chaired on November 8 and December 13.
Yeah, so the ad hoc was created about two years ago with the advent of the pilot student housing program, and we've really taken the past two years to really learn about what we're doing, you know, building this plan as we fly it, really understanding what sort of expectations we should have when it comes to our student housing providers, what is really important. We've learned that improved communication between our campuses and these providers is essential, specifically in terms of the collaboration between our basic needs coordinators and the students that are part of this program, as well as the service providers. And we have come to a point where we are looking to take the next step in institutionalizing, creating a sense of permanency in our student housing pilot, which is different than the work we are doing on the facility side in terms of building student housing. And, you know, we've got to work on figuring out a way to kind of differentiate the two. This is a more of an immediate solution that we are providing to our students today and have been for the past two years. And so we are currently in discussions with our board president, with our college presidents, looking to create an RFP with our student housing providers for the next step forward, so that our colleges can really work deeply and more intentionally with those providers and serving their, the specific students that they have on their campuses. So this is a big step forward. We've really come a long way in this work. Action items for our next meeting is to review some of the criteria for that, that student housing RFP, which, again, separate from the facilities work that we are doing, this is for our student housing providers, and really utilizing the institutional knowledge of our basic needs coordinators and our folks on the ground that do this work every day. We are developing a communications plan to really, you know, be able to communicate to our, our LACC community and the general public around all of the housing initiatives that we are doing here in the district. And then we're working on other basic needs. We're going to start talking about how we can really jump forward and institutionalize our Metro Go Pass program in the next meetings to come. So definitely all invited to join at the next meeting in January.
Thank you. Trustee Bona, please summarize the proceedings of the Student Protection Task Force that you chaired on December 4, also previously known as the DACA Task Force.
Yes, I'm also passing out the minutes from that meeting, if I could pass that out. I want to thank Ben for putting that together. We have an awesome administrative team. So the committee is called the Student Protection Task Force, to be sufficiently, to have the umbrella be sufficiently large, so that LACC can consider policies and actions that will protect students, faculty, and staff from, let's just say, politics other than LACC. We, the minutes, if Lupe has the minutes of the, of the meeting, but just to point out, in terms of interim chancellor, Roman was president, as well as trustee and president Emeritus, Michelle Henderson, I like that, Trustee Vela. We talked about the different aspects of some of our legal positions. We spoke about the Dream Center. We spoke about the LGBT centers on the, on the campuses. So it was, there was a large discussion about making sure and protect students' student rights, whatever, how those rights may be diminished and involved in the protection of students. So I wanted to make sure and bring that up. We had about 70 individuals present. We did record the session, so I believe it's on the LACC YouTube site, so anyone can go and visit it. At this point, that was the first meeting, so President Eno, that's going to be up to you on, on who's going to continue on that committee, so I just wanted to say that. Plus, I did want to acknowledge that, that student trustee did mention to me earlier that she wanted to know when the meetings are, so she can be informed and attend. But also, student trustee, you mentioned, what was the issue that you mentioned that you would like us to consider?
Student parents.
Okay, student parents, and maybe if the staff who are, can meet with the student trustee and define that a little better, so we can bring that up specifically in the committee. So that's on that. Would you like me to bring up the in-language?
Yes, if you may.
Yes, okay. So we have our March 28, Vice Chancellor, is it March 28, the summit? 27, okay, so we have the, the in-language summit that's coming up. We have, we expect anywhere around probably 200 to 300 individuals, hybrid and in-person. We have the State Chancellor's Office, who is co-sponsoring it. We also have HACU, which is the Hispanic Association College and Universities, which is also co-sponsoring it. Thank you to Vice Chancellor Nicole Alvalopez, Maria Velos, and obviously our chancellor, Alberto Roman Fuente, for putting it together as well. So we're working together on that. So there's a lot going on, and thank you very much.
That's great. Excellent. Thank you for, for Chair Emeritus Henderson for getting that going, along with Maria Velos. I know both of you worked, along with the chancellor, a lot on making sure that that took into effect immediately. Chancellor Roman?
Just a clarification, trustee Bona, we did opt not to record the meeting, in part because we are talking about sensitive issues that may bring attention at this point, and so we're cognizant of how we're handling these, and so.
They are not on YouTube, so delete that. That never occurred, never said that.
Thank you. I just clarified.
Is that okay?
Okay.
Great. Okay, so those are all of the committee reports. We, so the next item is Board Travel Authorization. May I please have a motion and a second on item H2? It's moved by Henderson. Can I get a second? I can second. Eno? Can we do roll call, please?
Yes. Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela? Trustee Veras? Thank you.
Can I also, for adopting the 2025 calendar, may I have a motion and a second on item I1? Moved by Hernandez, second.
I'll second, but I have a question, and I know the answer already, Lupe, but I just have to double check. You made sure it didn't conflict with Jewish holidays or any other holidays for the new calendar?
Correct, I did.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other further discussion on the calendar for next year? No? Roll call, please.
Student to see Beham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela? Trustee Veras?
Thank you.
Our next item is the reappointment of our Personnel Commission. May I have a motion and second on item I2?
Some moved.
Moved by Henderson?
Okay.
Second by Hernandez. Any discussion? No? Roll call, please.
Student to see Beham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela? Trustee Veras?
Thank you. Now, we have our report from our chancellor regarding activities and pending issues on the district.
Thank you. Thank you so much. This is my first one, that's right. First of all, let me extend my own congratulations to you. Now, President Eno, First Vice President Hernandez, and of course, Second Vice President Hoffman, looking forward to working with you in the 2025 year. We have trying times ahead of us, as has been stated by some of our colleagues, but we're looking forward to your leadership and the commitment that we've given to our students over the course of the history of this district. So thank you for accepting these roles, and I look forward to working with each of you. I want to personally thank President Henderson for an amazing 2024 year. Your leadership was truly appreciated, and we benefited greatly from everything that you did to lead this district. So thank you so much, President Henderson, again, for your leadership as president. I'm going to be, try to be, if we can go to the next slide, try to be brief in the interest of time. I do want to give you an enrollment update. We have some good numbers to share with you. A very brief summary on budget, we'll have more information probably in January to give you. And then here's what I'd like to do going forward. We are LACC. We are one of the most diverse districts in the nation. We are the largest. It's important for us to highlight some of the DIA efforts that are happening across our colleges and our districts. So I've asked our colleagues to come forward in lieu of the reports for now and highlight the work that's happening, the initiatives, the programs. Today, we're going to highlight CITY and ELAC. That will be the last part of the report. We'll ask President Gabru, and we'll ask President Perez to give you just a quick sort of summary of some of the programs they have. I think the conversation will be timely. So let me go through enrollment quickly here. We have good news. Our winter 2025 enrollment is looking good. 14% up on headcount, 12% on enrollment. We, we did add a few more sections. We're a little up there on the section count at 8%, but I'm also encouraged by the enrollment divided by section. That speaks to efficiency. Class size average, you'll see there, we're hovering around 30. I suspect those numbers will continue to go up in the weeks to come, leading to the beginning of the winter 2025 intercession. The numbers across the board look good with regards to age also. You'll see a jump there in the under 20 and 20 to 24. We have a little bit of a drop there with the 55 and over, but generally speaking, all groups are moving in the right direction. Next slide, please. Ethnicity also, I want to point out that we have significant gains in Black, African-American students, 20%, Filipinos, 29% up, Latina-Latino, 15% up, and all of the other categories are moving in the right direction. Pacific Islanders, a little low. You might see the number is only 52, so there's a decrease of 10. It's not material to the overall percentage, but there is a little bit of a enrollment loss there. We're including the non-credit enrollment, which I think is important. A lot of the colleges are growing in the non-credit area, and I think it's important to see where the direction is with regards to non-credit headcount. You'll see it's up 21% from winter of '24, 23% up on enrollment from winter of '24. A lot of the times for intercessions, we do find most of our courses are remote, and that's been even pre-pandemic. A lot of students like to take a class or two extra. Remote is a preferred option, so you'll see that 72% of our courses for winter are remote. But look at the fill rate. We're at 84% fill for remote courses compared to 61% of the in-person. Again, that's been a preferred modality for students, similar numbers in the summer, but the good news is that enrollment is in the right direction across all of our colleges. So I want to give kudos to each of the colleges or teams for continuing to work very hard to get our enrollment numbers up. So I want to give kudos to each of the colleges or teams for continuing to work very hard to get our enrollment numbers up. We have not seen over the course of the last few years, any significant negative enrollment numbers. Everything is continuing to move in the upward trend. And I want to again commend the colleges for their efforts, the district office who continues to support you. And of course, the stakeholders, our faculty, who have been very much involved in the process. Our classified teams, who you've all talked about today in terms of our basic need centers and some of the other support that they receive and our admin teams. Okay, I'm going to skip that slide because I kind of summarized it already. And let me go to the budget. I would say our budget in this current year is stable. The college presidents, the stakeholders at each of the colleges, they've been working very hard to ensure that we are balanced at the end of this year. We are having conversations about what the '25, '26 year could look like. It does involve, you know, bringing in the teams, our labor partners, our, I would say participatory governance processes to have conversations about how to contract. While we see the state budget being okay, we still have to make significant reductions to be able to move forward in a balanced way. This is a conversation that we're having with the college presidents, with their teams. We anticipate putting forth plans that include, you know, everything from leveraging our categorical funds to revenue generation, looking for grants, looking at ways in which the district can provide additional support. All of that, our conversations are having at DBC, we're having at the college level and we're having at the district office. I can tell you, they are fully committed to doing everything we can to remain fiscally solvent. So I want to give them, again, a commendation for the work that they're doing. Thank you so much to each of the college presidents and your teams for that. I'm going to say this, we are cautiously, cautiously optimistic about the state budget next year. We're hearing positive things with regards to where we may be. We could potentially even see a COLA, but it's too early to know. The first glimpse of the budget really will be at the governor's proposal in January. We're going to be looking at what, you know, in terms of where the priorities will be. I know community colleges historically have been the priority of at least this current governor and prior governors. So, but we are hearing that K through 12 is going to need additional support. Why is that? They are seeing declining enrollments, unlike community colleges and the universities. So there might be a little bit of emphasis there with regards to how the budget will be addressed. But I remain fully confident that community colleges will fare well. Again, it's too early to know. We remain cautiously optimistic and we will continue to follow along in terms of making sure we are doing our advocacy with our trustees and with our leadership team as we go to Sacramento and DC in the weeks to come. So with that, let me turn it over to our college presidents. We have two amazing, amazing programs that we want to talk about. In light of what we forecast will be a difficult year in 2025 at certain levels, I want you to know that we remain fully committed, fully committed to our students. We want to make sure they have welcoming environments, that we provide the resources, the referrals, the support that they need to thrive academically irrespective of their status, gender, zip code, ethnicity. And at the end of the day, for us, this is a priority. I know our stakeholders have talked to it. Now, we're in this together, folks. We will do everything we can within our means to make sure our students feel welcome on our campuses. The Dream Resource Centers are vital. They're vital to the support that we provide to a particular set of students. So let me have, I'll start with City College to talk a little bit about their Dream Resource Center, the amazing work that they're doing and the recognition that they received recently with regards to actually presenting at a conference. And then I'll go to East LA College. Dr. Gabrue?
Awesome. Thank you, Chancellor. Congratulations, Dr. Kelsey Eno. And also congratulations to trustee Hernandez and Hoffman. And also huge thank you to trustee Henderson for your leadership and all that you've done to support our district and our community. I want to start off by first recognizing someone who's going to help us lead this work. Our new vice president of student services, Dr. Olga Diaz. She's joined. She's joined the LACC family and it's been about four weeks, so we are honored to work with her to help lead a lot of the work we do in the student services area, but also across campus and our community. So I'm doing a presentation representing our program. And this program is special to all of us, but really special to me. I came to the US when I was eight years old as an immigrant student, not speaking a word of English. And recognizing that we have so many students that walk across our campuses with so many challenges, so much diversity in who they are and where they come from. And to have a program like the Dream Resource Center is an honor for me to be able to support and work with because we talk about a lot about boutique programs and how they're small. But when we talk about this program, I want to really highlight the people that make this program. Under the leadership of our faculty member, Carolina, she is a superstar. She's a superstar because she advocates for all of our students, but especially for these group of students. Our Dream Resource Center creates a community for our students, creates a family, creates safety, create a sense of belonging so that these students, when they're on our campuses and they hear the noise outside of LA City College, they know they have somewhere they can go, where they feel safe, protected, also to pursue their dreams. So it's an honor for me to be able to present with these, they're actually not students, they're our staff on the picture that you see. We went to a national conference where they submitted a proposal and they got accepted and they did a phenomenal job. And my role was there to support them because I see the work that they do. So just to tell you a little about what our Dream Resource Center does, like many of the other programs, they provide services to all undocumented students at LACC to ensure that they strive in all the things that they need to do. They provide free immigration legal services, help navigate the admissions and financial aid process, provide one-on-one and group mental health support, academic support that aligns with our focus on retention, completion and transfer. They also create a space where students can come see an academic counselor, where they can focus on their next steps. Whether certificates, degrees, whatever they want to do, we've created wraparound support to protect them, but also to lead them in the work that they need to do moving forward. Focus on transfer, career counseling tailored to undocumented students and also resources, scholarships, internships, fellowships and more. And we've done a good job of in working with our foundation to also look at other resources to supplement the work that we need to do, given the circumstances, to make sure we support our undocumented students. So with that being said, in addition to presenting at a national conference, they continue ongoing collaboration with our non-credit CTE effort, CTE to offer our first ever entrepreneurship bootcamp, teaching undocumented students to generate income from a self-employment perspective. So these are the kind of innovative things we want to provide them because we know it's difficult. But with the right leadership that we have with our team, our students have hope. Our students have aspiration. They have dreams. They want to come back and make an impact to future students in their community. So we're honored to be able to do that. This is not just about saying we're about equity. It's about really walking the equity walk. It's about being able to say, we're going to fight for our students given the circumstances to make sure that our students are supported. Also, our faculty and our staff support these students in this program. So at City College, we've taken a team effort to be able to say, this program is one of our many flagship programs, but it's a program that we want to continue to support to make sure that our students excel. So I have one other highlight that's not related to this, but also our students get to be a part of it is our foundation at our gala raised $564,000. And and out of that, $564,000, $100,000 of it is dedicated to nursing, Rattac, our public health. So that our students that are in the Dream Resource Center can pursue their careers and get scholarships and get resources so that they can excel. We're also getting another $360,000 to support our formerly incarcerated students who continue to come to us so that we continue to support them on an ongoing basis. So we are honored to serve our community, but I just want to say we have amazing faculty and staff in the Dream Resource Center that continue to impact these young people and these students so that they can pursue their dreams and their goals. Thank you.
Thank you so much, President Gabrue. Amazing work happening. We're just commenting on some of your staff that we know and I know they're at the ground level, working with our students with empathy, care, compassion and a sense of, I would say, cultural relevance and experience, many of which have similar lived experience to the students they serve. So thank you again. I'm going to ask Dr. Perez now, East LA College, and I have to say, we're going in alphabetical order, folks. I don't want you to think I'm giving preference in any college. We just started with City and we go to East. So East LA College, Dr. Monte Perez, welcome.
Thank you, Chancellor. And again, congratulations to trustee Eno and Henderson for your good work and Hoffman for your election and also Sarah, trustee. It's been a month and a half and I must say, I'm very impressed with the hard work of East LA College faculty, staff and students in this particular area of Dream Resource Center, which actually administers a number of DEIA efforts on campus. So I'll start with the Dream Resource Center and serving our students, immigrant, undocumented DACA students. First of all, it's a safe place. In fact, our message to all our students is, we are home to a safe place. You're protected from all outside challenges. You're home here and you're safe at East LA College. We also support in the Dream Resource Center, all the navigation that has to occur with AB540 students, SB68 petition DACA students, the California Dream Act and through academic counseling legal support. We have 654 AB540 students right now. We have served 98% of them and processed them and support them on what we call weekly check-ins. They come in, how you doing, what other additional support do you need? And like LACC, we do have a number of services, including mental health, social worker support and clinicians to support them through their journey. We have a marketing videos to all of our students about the safety of our campus. And the message we have is we are everywhere. We're everywhere on this campus and we are one. We also have what we call safe zone trainings. So we're training allies. This is faculty and staff and we train them along how to be an ally to our undocumented students, our DACA students and our other students that are facing these challenges. We're launching an English cohort in fall of 2025 to assist our DACA students so they can succeed. And we are ongoing branding in our campaign. The thing I'd like to emphasize is that it's much of a model and a pilot, not only a pilot, but a model for serving all students. With regard to what we call our Husky Pride Center, we serve our LBGQ students with similar services. And we do have a cohort for them in English 101 and 103. And we have success coaches or what we call success management cohort to assist them to have success and again, a safe environment. We also have what we call the Educational Justice Rising Scholars Program. We're currently serving with a large grant and we're going after renewal a number of our formerly incarcerated students on our campus, which again, is part of our Dream Resource Center network that we're providing for them. And that includes social work, mental health and other support services. And finally, we're currently doing dual enrollment and enrollment and teaching at Curvy Detention Center. So we're inside detention centers, providing education, which I'm really proud of for those that are incarcerated youth. But I think the bottom line for us is that our whole college is committed with the Dream Resource Center. The staff is stellar in terms of their commitment and their ideas. And we will continue to expand the effort, given our challenges. I'm glad to be part of East LA's community at this point to help support and lead that effort. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, President Perez. Wonderful work happening. In future board meetings, you'll hear from all the nine colleges. We've asked them to prepare reports. This will be part of the chancellor's report. I think it's important for you to hear some of the amazing work happening at each of our colleges. And this is a way to get the information in front of you. The last thing I have is, I am going to ask, we're constantly hiring great talent. And I want to acknowledge the new colleagues that we hire on the administrative side of the House. I know we've introduced one already, but presidents, if you have anybody that you've hired recently, quickly, we're going to go and introduce them and then that will conclude my report, Madam President. So any new hires? Dr. Arnellas, President Arnellas?
There are like 40 people online.
If you have, if you have anybody to introduce, just come up to the podium. We'll do it quickly, please.
Thank you, Chancellor Roman. Congratulations to the new leadership. Thank you, trustee Henderson, for your leadership. I am very pleased to introduce you all to the Mission College new leadership. I want to start with Dr. Nathaniel Jones, our vice president of admin services. Dr. Claudia Velasco, our vice president of student services. And Dr. Brian Rodriguez, our new associate dean at Epicormicide. Thank you.
Thank you so much, President Arnellas. Mission in the House. Okay, any others? I thought there was one more. Okay, so, all right. Well, thank you so much. Madam President, that concludes my report. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great report. Thank you. So now we will, we skipped K because there was nothing under there. The combined consent calendar, we now have for review, combined consent from M1 to Y12. This item includes consent calendars for human resources, personnel commission, academic affairs, student services, budget, finance and business and facilities. Can I get a motion and a second to combine the consent calendar for M1 through M12? Motion? So moved by Veras and second by Bella? Can I get a roll call, please? Oh, sorry. No, I'm just, it is just to adopt the consent, combined consent, if you want to.
U5? Is this where, because we combined a lot, I just want to make sure that. So I have a question about U5.
Sure. Should we pull that?
No, it's just a question, trustee. Maybe we can answer the question and keep them on consent. Do you find?
Yeah, it just, it could be brought up. It was just very vague where that, and I was just wondering where. It just, it was very vague and just wanted to see what this was about. Is this something, I mean, in terms of looking at our budget, it just seemed, this one seemed to stick out. It didn't seem clear, seemed vague.
This is an item related to universal personnel services for human resources. I don't know if Vice Chancellor Williams, you may have additional information on this particular item?
This is a human resources, let's call it overflow contract for investigations as well as mediations when we have conflicts within the district where it can't be handled in-house or yeah, when it can't be handled in-house.
It just, it didn't say investigations.
Right.
Unless I'm reading it wrong.
So it's, it's the work of the ODA team, which is predominantly investigations and some mediations and ADA accommodation appeals as well.
Okay, so is this mostly investigations or, and is there a reason it wasn't clear on the description?
Well, that's the work that ODA does, so it's all ODA projects. They do investigations, they do ADA appeals. And that's the predominant thing that they do. and that's the predominant thing that they do.
Some of it may also include, trustee, when, you know, they do accommodations, some of that work, and support for Title IX investigations, as Vice Chancellor Williams.
Right. They do not do training, though. We have a TICSA contract that does training.
As I was looking at it, it's just, it's important that, and that's what I had a sense that it was investigations, which I just found interesting that the description doesn't say it. And I think in terms of transparency for the public, it should say it, especially if it is going to do it. I would like to pull this item out for a separate vote.
Okay, so we'll pull item V. I'm sorry, U5, excuse me, U5 for a separate vote.
Are there any other items that require additional information from the Board? No. So with the exception of U5, can we, can I get a motion and approve for the combined consent calendar?
So moved.
Hernandez, can I get a second?
Second.
Yeah, you just need to.
Friendly amendment. Okay. So I think the motion on the floor, you're okay with amending it to take out U5? Okay. Roll call, please, Lupe.
Yes. Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras. Thank you.
Can I move to approve item U5? I think it's really important to have our investigations followed through with.
I'll second.
Especially in conflicts and situations like that. So it reads fine, but everybody's entitled to their opinion. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Lupe.
Student trustee Baham's advisory vote? Trustee Buena?
No.
Trustee Henderson?
No.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Is that a yes? Thank you. Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, so now, or may I have a motion and a second to adopt the business items Z1 through Z18? Move by Hernandez, second? I can second. You know, second. Are there any items in which require additional information?
Yes, Z16 is, General Counsel, is that the one that state bar issue?
Z16? Sure.
That one.
Is there any additional ones? Or just that, that one?
Just that one.
Okay, great. Additional information on it? Did you have any?
A separate vote as well.
Gotcha, separate vote as well. So, just in the interest of time, can we just vote to approve, are there any other agenda items that people wish to pull? No? So with the exception of Z16, can I, can we just vote to approve the rest of them? Roll call, please, Lupe.
Student trustee Baham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to move to approve item Z16. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Vella. First. Is there discussion? Please.
General Counsel, what, can you explain to me how this item is Brown Act compliant? In terms of the public's kind of right to know, and can you walk me through how it is? I'll give you the benefit of the doubt that it is. I just have questions, but you're the expert.
Thank you. It's Brown Act compliant because what you're voting on is to ratify a professional service agreement. The description actually includes who the agreement is and what the services are going to be provided, as well as the total amount not to exceed. It doesn't speak to how the particular individual will be retained, because you're not speaking to a particular matter. You're simply, again, ratifying this particular contract as described. So that is sufficient from our perspective to the public to know what the Board is doing. Thank you.
Need further questions on the item? If not, roll call, please, Lupe.
Okay. Student trustee Baham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
No.
Trustee Henderson?
Epstein.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Related to state bar? Oh, yeah. Yes, sorry.
Thank you. Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. So now, we will move on to facilities items AA1 through AA27. Just as a reminder, AA6 was pulled from the beginning. Can I get a motion and a second to adopt the facilities items AA1 through AA27?
So moved.
Move by Hernandez, second?
I'll second.
Second by Hoffman. Any items which require additional information? Roll call, please, Lupe.
Student trustee Baham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Veras?
Yes.
So now, we have item BB recommendations from the Chancellor. Chancellor Román, would you please provide any brief explanation on the next four action items?
Yeah, let me ask Deputy Chancellor, as I'm coming in, she's going to be a little more versed on these particular policies. This is BB1 through 4. If you could assist regarding these.
These are here for second reading. So the Board saw these last month. So any of the changes are included in the items. So they're just here for a second reading, and if you have any changes, otherwise you would vote to approve them as submitted.
Individually.
And, yes. And then the first one, I would defer to President Gribbins, because it's a request to name a facility at L.A. Valley College.
Yeah. In fact, would it be appropriate to have just a minute or so, President Gribbins? If you gave justice to this particular item, I think it'd be important to hear from our President on this one. Thank you.
I was expecting a light. Good afternoon. All of you know that we have a police orientation preparation program modeled off of the amazing program that West has that's been going really well. The program wanted an obstacle course, and we're delighted that Ira Krensky worked with us to connect with Uri Hershur, the founder of the Skirball Center, and Uri stewarded a donation to completely fund the obstacle course. So we're delighted to have that. The obstacle course is actually now installed at Valley College for use of that program and any other program. And we're proposing to name the obstacle course after Uri and Mina.
I know there's a, there's a resolution attached. It would be really great if we could read that publicly. I just read it now. I mean, I think I read it last time also, but it's really powerful, and I can see why we would want to name the obstacle course after him. Can we, can we read it into the, or can some, I'm happy to read it if that's, I'm just thinking, we, you know, we always put these resolutions, and they just kind of get passed, and we never really read them into the record, and I think this one is really powerful. So is that okay? Resolution naming obstacle course at Los Angeles Valley College, the Yuri and Uri and Mina Hershur obstacle course. Whereas Education Code 70902-6 establishes the authority of the Board of Trustees to control and manage the property of the district, and whereas Administrative Procedure 6620 provides it at the recommendation of the college president, the Board may change the names of existing campus buildings and facilities. And whereas Uri and Mina Hershur stewarded the donation for the complete cost of construction of the obstacle course at L.A. Valley College for use by the Police Orientation and Preparation Program, Kinesiology and other programs. And whereas Uri was born on March 14, 1941, to parents who fled Germany in the mid 1930s, then immigrated to the United States in 1954 and earned a bachelor's degree in history and sociology from the University of California, Berkeley, where he founded Cal Camp for underprivileged youth and later earned a doctorate in American Jewish history. And whereas Yuri was the executive vice president and dean of faculty of the four-campus Hebrew Union College Jewish Institute of Religion, as well as professor of American Jewish history. And whereas Yuri led the development and served as the foundation president and CEO of the Skirball Cultural Center, a place of meeting based on the Jewish tradition of welcoming strangers inspired by American democratic ideals of freedom and equity, and providing experiences celebrating discovery and hope, foster human connection, and calling us to build a more just society. And whereas Mina earned a baccalaureate degree in history from the University of Southern California and a master's degree in educational psychology and doctorate in clinical psychology from the University of California, Los Angeles. And whereas Mina has more than three decades of service as a psychologist, serving at-risk and special needs children and their families. Whereas Mina and Yuri are dedicated to working together for the betterment of the community. And whereas President Barry Gribbins also recommends to the Board of Trustees the naming of the obstacle course located east of the college stadium as the Yuri-Mina Hershur obstacle course. Now, therefore, be it resolved that in keeping with the provisions of Education Code, Section 70902-6, and Administrative Procedure 6620, the Los Angeles Community College District Board of Trustees approves the naming of the proposed Los Angeles Valley College obstacle course as identified above. Thank you for indulging me, because after I read this, I just felt it was powerful, and it should be read into the record during this board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that said, can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Yeah. A second? Trustee Veras, wait, I'll take a second. Roll call, please?
Student trustee Baham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you. Item for BB2, Board Election Second Reading. Can I get a motion and a second?
So moved.
The move by Hernandez, I'll second. Second by Hoffman. Any discussion on this one? Roll call, please, Lupe.
Student trustee Baham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena? Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Veras?
Yes.
So item BB3, vacancies on the Board, second reading. Can I get a motion and a second?
Move to approve.
Hoffman move, Hernandez second. Any discussion? I think just personally, someone who recently had to run twice in an election, I did have some questions in regarding to the process and procedure, but understood that's just how it goes, and I'm still here, so it's great. So, roll call, please.
Student trustee Baham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Ino? Trustee Vella? Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Great. And then the final one is, can I get a motion and a second on item BB4, the Chancellor succession second reading? I can, so move by Hernandez?
I'll second.
Second by Hoffman. Any discussion? Thank you for this one, because we had to implement it, so.
I have a quick discussion point.
Please.
So we, we did, this was one of the ones that the Board discussed during my presidency. So there was this kind of question around whether the Chancellor appoints an acting chancellor or the Board, because there were circumstances where the Chancellor perhaps was not able to for physical reasons. I mean, so does that address that? Because I kept, you know, that was something that just kept coming up and coming up. And by the way, this is when the Chancellor appoints, you know, his inner, it's not like what we're doing with Dark Side Plan. It's different. It's when they, I think they go away for like 30 days or something happens.
Right.
Like a sickness or illness. Who then appoints if they, if the Chancellor, for example, is too sick to appoint, or whatever?
So it would come to the Board, then? Yeah. This, this is only to address, you have, you have a Chancellor in place, and the Chancellor is away on vacation, and this allows, allows that individual to appoint an acting chancellor while they're out of the district. Anything that would exceed 30 days? So if the Chancellor was in the hospital, and it certainly looks like it's going to be more than 30 days, then it would go to the Board. The idea is that you don't want to have to call a special meeting to appoint an acting chancellor just while the Chancellor's on vacation. And then, and then anything 31 days or more, there's another BP that covers that, that specifically gives the authority in any longer range period for the Board to make the appointment.
Okay, yeah, I see it here. In the absence of Chancellor, when an acting Chancellor has not been named, the Board. Okay.
Trustee Vella, the Board ultimately retains the authority. If the current Chancellor is not able to get there in the hospital or whatever, you always retain that authority to do so.
Yeah.
It gives you up to 30 days. They're on vacation, whatever the case may be.
Yeah, and the reason, you know, I don't know if you saw UCLA pulled their foreign exchange students back because of, you know, whatever conflict there was over in the Middle East and so on and so forth. And that, you know, some Chancellors do travel the world, and so I just want to make sure if we couldn't get a hold of them or they couldn't appoint, or sorry, but it says it here. Thank you.
I'll be around. I'm not going to trouble them.
Swear.
It's possible. You just never know. Yeah.
Great. So with that said, can I get a, oh, I think roll call.
Student.
Or any other discussion? No. Lupe, roll call?
Student trustee Baham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Great. Perfect. So now, item CC, notice, reports, and informatives. Board members, there are two informatives and five notices. No actions required at this time. General Counsel Jeff Cretto will provide a brief report regarding item no.
We actually pulled that item at the beginning of the meeting. No problem at all, President.
Gotcha. So they're, oh, so just informatives. We're good. Moving right along. Item DD, announcements. Would any of my colleagues like to make any announcements or indicate future proposal, proposed actions? Madam Chair?
Yes.
Please.
So I would like to congratulate, and when I was Board President, we used to bring them to a board meeting, and I just, Mark, when he was here swearing you in, trustee Henderson reminded me, when I saw him, that we usually acknowledge all of our employees who have run for public office and were elected in the last election cycle, because we have a number of folks, Mark Henderson being one of them, because he's, is he still mayor with the city of Gardena? Or he's with the city of Gardena, and so. Oh, okay, yeah. Anyway, so we have lots of folks in our district, school board members, and also serve on small cities. We have a faculty member who was just elected to the Santa Clarita Community College District Board of Trustees. So I would like to acknowledge all of our faculty and staff who have run for public office. Whether you want or not, it takes a lot of courage, and it's really fantastic. And Dr. Román, if you could maybe send out an email so we know who all of those folks are, and we could recognize them maybe at a future board meeting, because I'd like to do that. And then again, another big congratulations to Board of Governors member, Adrian Brown. I see her everywhere. She's doing a great job on the Board of Governors. Really happy that she was reappointed. That's really, really great for our district. Anyway, thank you.
Sure. Anything else for future proposed actions?
Yes, I just wanted to announce the next Chancellor's Advisory Committee on LGBTQI Affairs will be held Tuesday, January 21 at 2:00 p.m. over Zoom, and email went out to.
And, uh, email went out to staff in the district.
Great.
Um, when, when I, yeah, on March 27th, well, for March 27th, we have the In-Language Summit. So we'll be, um, letting folks know if they want to, uh, attend that meeting as well.
Thank you. Nothing else? Okay, um, we will note those and for now, as for public comments, um, the First Amendment and Brown Act guarantee a member of the public right to criticize a public employer, public official, and performance of their duties. However, speakers are encouraged to focus the comments on the issue relevant to conduct of the public's business rather than on private unrelated matters. Speakers are reminded that the Brown Act and First Amendment do not protect defamatory statements made which may sub, be subject to speakers to personal liability. Are there many members of the public signed up to address the board?
No, ma'am.
Oh, great. So, um, any hands up?
No, ma'am.
No hands up? Great, moving right along. Um, are there any members of the public signed up to address the board for a closed session?
No, ma'am.
There is, someone's hand, well, someone's hand just went up, so, I'm not sure. Is that? There is a hand in the Zoom, but I don't. Oh, there is one hand up.
Would you like me to bring him in?
Yes, um, just remember what I just said and you will have three minutes the minute that you start speaking. Crystal, are you, are you okay?
He's coming in now, yes.
Um, and then maybe just to verify, what are you speaking to?
Mr. Cuevas, if you can, uh, please state your topic?
Hello? Mr. Cuevas, are you?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, what item are you speaking to?
Is Z16, public comment.
On, on non-agenda items?
No, it's Z16. That's who I wanna speak to. Can I speak to that?
Alright.
Hello? Hello? Hello?
Z, uh, hello, yes. Are you, are you trying to speak on, so we just asked about matters not on the agenda?
Oh.
Agenda items?
Oh, okay, cuz I missed the, um, agenda items because I was in a meeting, so, okay, so I can't speak to Z16. Okay, I'll speak about something else. Don't worry about it. Okay, I just wanna know this question, and maybe Jeffrey or you guys can answer it in the future. Then whenever there's issues on the agenda that might not, what that you guys might not think are critical to the public when public money's being used to hire people, to protect people, especially any type of investigation, it should be public.
I'm sorry, if you could possibly send that in an email, cuz we're past that item right now.
Okay, so what can I speak to? Okay, so I have three minutes, right? I wanna, oh, I wanna, I know what I wanna do. I wanna say congratulations to, um, trustee.
Sorry, okay, yeah, you, it's past the, um, comments on the open items and so, um, hopefully in future planning we can make sure that your questions get responded to, but as of right now, you're past that. Um, so with that said, we are now going to go into closed session, um, with the accordance of the Brown, Brown and Act Government Code 54950, uh, the code to discuss matters on the proposed closed agenda item. Um, may I have a motion and a second to recess to closed session? Move by Hernandez. I will second. Thank you, everyone. One and done.
So ordered.